Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our county council meetings tonight, May 7th. We'll start out with a prayer and a pledge. Ms. Honeycutt?
Father God, thank you so much for the opportunity to come here tonight, the opportunity to serve, to work with these incredible folks here up at the dais, as well as our incredible staff and county government and all those elected in this county. I thank you for all of those who serve on our front lines that are home and away right now. I pray that you would bless and keep them, that you would protect them as they carry out those duties. I pray that you would give us wisdom in our decision-making tonight and that you would give us unity as we move forward with this county together. In the precious name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some public hearings. First one is the 9/11 fee amendment. 9/11, excuse me, 9/11.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing regarding an ordinance to amend the portion of Charleston County Code of Ordinances, Section 2-137 pertaining to the 9/11 emergency service fee.
Nobody signed up? Okay, thank you very much.
I did sign up.
Pardon me? You did?
Yeah.
Come on up. Yes, Mr. Bryant, he's always here. Come on up, Mr. Bryant.
Anthony G. Bryant, I have a real reason to do so. Anthony G. Bryant, 2123 Cortlandt Avenue, South Carolina 29403. Anthony G. Bryant's in Supreme Court. Anthony G. Bryant's name is in the U.S. Court of Appeals, U.S. District Court, on the issue of this fee and these fees associated. Now, these fees could be used appropriately by law enforcement under 183303 AB warrant by libel electronic communications. Now, we had 13 sheriffs in South Carolina and one sheriff called out a prank phone call. He used electronic means to say somebody else pranked something, but he pranked. And so therefore, we have an issue here in many counties in terms of their appropriations of these funds. Now, I mean, I'm just going to be real about where I stand with law enforcement and public safety in Charleston County questionable. So, I hope that this money, a 9/11 emergency, will be used for the employees. For inflation is taking place. We got inflation, we go to the store, everything got shrinkflation. Want to make sure every dollar we get, at least 80% of that money, go to the employees who are struggling and suffering a palliative response to the lack of resources. And that's why I'm here tonight, because the sheriff had challenged me to be here tonight in terms of our physical address. And she may have been in error regarding that address. And we may appropriate her money to be in there in said address. That's why I'm here, because I live there. And so therefore, I'm going to speak every time, because the sheriff told me I shouldn't speak tonight.
Thank you, sir. Next one, 2177 Ashley River Road rezoning. Marshay Miller. Are you going to, you're going to give us a little speech on that? Thank you.
Yeah.
Description? Thank you.
So, this is a request to amend the Ashley River Road corridor overlay zoning district map 3.1.13 of the comprehensive plan and map 5.10 and map 5.10C of the ZLDR to change the zoning designation of TMS 3541200006 from the neighborhood commercial designation to the community commercial designation. On March 25th, 2015, Ashley River Road corridor overlay zoning district was adopted and it is divided into three areas: light commercial, commercial core, and village commercial. The subject property is located within the village commercial area and retained its neighborhood commercial zoning upon adoption of the overlay district. The village commercial area is intended for less intense commercial development than the commercial core area. This, here is the location of the subject property when looking at the county as a whole. The future land use designation for the property is the overlay district maps as they currently exist. Here is a map of, map 3.1.13 of the Ashley River corridor within the comprehensive plan. This shows the proposed amendment to map 3.1.13. In the current zoning of the subject property, the subject property has frontage along Ashley River Road and contains a vacant building. All adjacent parcels are within the city of Charleston in zone residential. ZLDR, map 5.10 within the ZLDR for the Ashley River Road corridor. This is the proposed amendment to map 5.10. And then this is map 5.10.C, which is the village commercial area within the overlay. And this is the proposed amendment to map 5.10.C. The property is located within flood zone AE and shaded X. This is an aerial view to the west and an aerial view to the east. These are photos of the subject property and photos of surrounding properties. This slide shows a comparison of the allowed land uses in the current neighborhood commercial zoning and the requested community commercial zoning, and also those uses that are prohibited in the village commercial area. The applicant's proposed use is classified as artisan and craftsman, which is an allowed use within the current neighborhood commercial zoning, subject to conditions. And it is an allowed by right use within the community commercial zoning district. Here are the, here is approval criteria for the comprehensive plan amendment. The applicant responded to criteria on C. And because the property is surrounded by residential zoning and uses, as well as lower intensity commercial zoning and development in the area, has not changed significantly since the adoption of the overlay in 2015, the approval criteria have not been met. Therefore, staff recommends disapproval. Here is the approval criteria for the ZLDR text amendment, along with applicant responses. And because the approval criteria, as stated, has not been met, staff recommends disapproval of the comprehensive plan amendment and the ZLDR text amendment, the planning commission recommended approval. Prior to the April 8th Planning Commission meeting, four letters in support of the requests were received, no letters in opposition. And the piece, at the PC meetings, five individuals spoke in support of the requests, and one person gave a general comment stating they were against any challenge changes that would impact the current zoning of the Wallace Lane and Richmond Street community. And no public input has been received prior to the public hearing. This map shows the area from which the support letters were received, and this meeting was noticed as required. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Do we know what the applicant is proposing to put there? Is the applicant here?
Yes, the applicants are here.
All right, can you get, tell us what you're planning on putting there? If you're.
How are you doing? My name's Jessica Luzier. My husband and I own Stone Castings of Charleston. And so we're a local business here in West Ashley. We've been here, the business has been running for almost 20 years. And we make things out of cast stone, concrete, and GFRC. So, we do custom jobs. We did the fallen officer's monument. We did the monument for the firefighters. So, we're a big part of the community. Custom jobs, it's, it's, we don't do, we don't do any wholesale, we don't do commercial. It's, it's all custom jobs that we do.
Thank you. Thank you. This will be coming back up in about two weeks, Mr. Moody, I believe, so. So, let's ask more questions. If you've got a question, go ahead.
Thank you for your excellent presentation, and thank you for coming to speak about the good work that you do. But this, I'm looking at the photographs and I'm looking at the change, and just want to make clear now, you can only have four units per acre. If we do this, they can put 16 units per acre, and they can put a truck stop there, a gas station, a car salesman. What is to prevent, if we make this change, and I'm looking at the photographs, it's still heavily, I mean, there is the kind of abandoned building, but it's still a heavily forested area that can be transformed to a truck stop, a heavy construction services, and 16 units. Is there anything, even though the applicant has admirable community work, and that would be a good thing, what is to prevent it from turning into 16 units or a gas station or a truck stop if we make this change in zoning?
Yeah, so the shape and size of the lot will limit development of the subject parcel. So, it would, some of the uses that would be allowed in community commercial would not be feasible due to the development requirements. They wouldn't be able to meet the development requirements.
Any further questions? Mr. Moody?
Just a comment. Thank you. Councilman Middleton and I were speaking earlier, I won't presume to speak for him, but my constituents get to come off of Ashley Hall Plantation Road and look right at that disgusting property every day. It's a real quirky property, there's not really many uses that can go there. That's why it sat like it has for so long. We just did an intersection improvement there not too long ago, maybe less than a year it was completed. So, the area is getting more mobile, and it's just a really nasty property. So, I'm going to wholeheartedly support this when it comes down the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any further questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Are there any, anyone signed up?
Yep. We have Anthony Bryant, and then the applicants, if they wanted to speak again.
Anthony G. Bryant, you got my address. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the process real quick here. Okay, the, 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 the planning commission said no. No, no, the, the, the staff said no. Right? So, they said no. It's similar to the Ports Authority, where they did a, did meeting. So, the, the planning commission said, yeah. The Ports Authority Board and Project Triton, which was an acquisition of Ben DeVaro's property, and then West Vehicle's property, similar. Okay? The General Assembly elects, appoints these people to make decisions, like you, we elected you to do the same thing. But, again, the overlay district, I'm going to talk about the overlay district. UDO is when I was serving on the BZA, Inform Development Orders. The reason why we got these problems right now, it never was enforced, it wasn't enforceable state law. So, you, you're hanging on to an overlay district, Mount Pleasant is all overlay districts when I was in, overlay district, Mount Pleasant. Now, we got settlement community problem. City of Charleston, overlay district, West Ashley, where you place in that annex, problem. North Charleston kind of chilled a little bit, wasn't that aggressive. But what we dealing with right now, what, what we going to deal with, this, these ordinance, settlement community, was the planning commission basically made a lot of decisions it should have never made in the first place. It created a hardship. And what city, what county council did, what their appointments is, they said, well, we're just going to go ahead and roll with it. These overlay districts don't have water and sewer, you still don't have water and sewer, Charleston County. You got to go with it, Mount Pleasant Water Systems, City of Charleston Water Systems. By the way, Sullivan's out, they need to pay their bill for like a million dollars, Sullivan's out for their bills. So, again, these problems are almost 47 years old. So, who going to bail the cat?
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. The, you want to speak again?
Come up together?
Yes, sir. But just one of you can speak.
They, they both signed up.
Oh, okay.
One big thing about the property that will prevent what a lot of you are concerned by with opening up to community commercials, the fact that the property is 58 feet wide. Even our use, we're kind of struggling with it, but we definitely think we can make it work, and we're really excited to fix up the property, because anybody that's like, oh, you guys are looking at property, like, yeah, where? The abandoned dry cleaners on 61, and every single person knows what building I'm talking about. And that's not really for a good reason, right? It's been abandoned since 2017. We really want to fix it up and make it look nice, and we want to have a nice showroom, and we want to have a spot that we're proud of, too. I also found out last week that SC DOT is acquiring the property next to it, that's the vacant lot, that's a residential. So, I understand that we're, we're surrounded by residential, but you're not, you're going to back up to the highway and the expansion of 526. We still think that this property will be a great fit for us, and we don't think that someone is going to come behind us and build some in St. Ross City, because you can't, it's 58 feet wide. I think I'm done. You want to say?
Russell Luzier, I'm also the owner and operator. I just wanted to see if anyone else has questions for us. Again, we are a local business. We've been in Charleston for 12 years, so, and in Charleston County. And we're just excited about the opportunity. We currently have nine employees, who are also excited about the opportunity. We currently rent right now, and we're just trying to, you know, better the community and, you know, better our situation and, you know, better our, our turnout for the, you know, local customers, builders, architects, and homeowners that we work with. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
And then there was one more person, Maran Dag.
Hi, my name's Maran Dag. I live at 712 Shelly Road. I'm here in my capacity as a resident of West Ashley. My family and I often dine on 61, go out for dinner, and pass this location. And as it's been noted here previously, it is definitely an eyesore, it's something that you notice when you're driving by. And just kind of over the years, it's, you know, become more and more rundown. There's graffiti, there's sometimes trash in front of it. And I was definitely very excited when I found out that there was going to be a business moving in to this location. I know there's going to be, you know, facade improvements, and that just, there's generally, I think it's good for the area that somebody's going to be occupying that location. I think it's going to be a positive thing for the, for the local kind of area. Also, I understand that this business in particular doesn't generate a lot of retail traffic, and, which I think is a huge win for 61 considering this, the congestion there. So, I do think this is a good fit for that location for that reason. And then also, as the owners express, they're, they live locally, it's a family-run business. I think they have a vested interest in the community, and will be good caretakers of that location. And that's why I'm in favor of it being your zone for their use. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Next one is Rutledge Tomb Site Plan Development.
Okay, this is a request to rezone a 0.07 acre portion of TMS 583000016 from the special management S3 zoning to the Rutledge Tomb Plan Development, PD 189 zoning district, to preserve a historic tomb and allow for a pocket park. Upon adoption of this ZLDR in 2001, the subject parcel was on RR1, later renamed S3, and then in 2001, the subject property, as part of the Phillips community, was approved for a historic preservation district designation by county council. In April of 2023, council approved green belt funds for the Low Country Land Trust to purchase the 0.07 acre tomb site. And this past September, the Phillips community was added to the National Register of Historic Places. Here is the location of the subject property when looking at the county as a whole. The future land use designation is urban suburban cultural community protection. And the subject property is currently undeveloped in zone S3, surrounding, all surrounding properties are zoned S3 as well. The property is located within flood zone shaded X in AE8. And here is an aerial view from the north and the south. These are photos of the subject parcel and surrounding properties. So, the slide, this slide shows the requested PD guidelines. So, as we stated, they want to subdivide the 0.07 acre portion to preserve the tomb, and then they offer, and also public access to the site via the establishment of a pocket park. Residential and community uses will be prohibited. No structures would be allowed to be constructed on the site, and further subdivision will be prohibited as well. And access to the site will be by existing sidewalks, and therefore, no parking will be allowed. They are requesting that land use perimeter and right-of-way buffers not be required as well. This slide shows the comparison of the allowed land uses in the current S3 zoning, and then the proposed land uses in the PD, which will only include the historic site, the pocket park, and as stated previously, no residential or commercial uses. This is the conceptual site plan. And the comprehensive plan recommends the urban suburban cultural community protection future land use designation for the subject parcel, which is intended to protect and promote the culture and unique development patterns of existing communities and sustain their long, strong sense of community. Additionally, the application is also consistent with the cultural resources element goal and strategies by preserving a significant historic and archaeological resource of Charleston County, while increasing public awareness of the historic character of the county and working with the Phillips community, one of Charleston's historic Gulligichi settlement communities, to help preserve an important piece of their history and community. Staff and planning commission and staff both recommended approval with the following conditions listed here on this slide. Prior to the April 8th Planning Commission meeting, no public input received, one speaker spoke in support at the meeting, and we received no public input prior to the May 7th public hearing. Notified as required. Thank you.
We have two people signed up. Mr. Bryant and Richard Haberham.
You can see the problem. You, you can, you can see 2001. You can see the problem. The problem's in 2001, 99. That's the problem, this whole problem. I live downtown, I'm a downtown guy. Okay? I didn't, I didn't grow up in the rural areas. I'm a city boy. So, I really don't understand the dynamics of it. But I do understand the dynamics of what happened downtown, and how it happened. Through preservation rules, regulations, through land use ordinances, knowing that Euclid versus Ohio versus Amity 1920, some hundred years ago, decided to trip the covenants, where black folk could live, not live, and even the Jewish community. We know in 1956, when they built the highways through the peninsula, that was the government that did that. So, everything that happened downtown is happening with rural folk. And I, I heard the sheriff and SLED and others don't like me speaking, and even some people from the rural areas, I don't speak, you guys speak for me. As an individual, we need to see it myself, and as a person who was served in this council in this body, who faced this issue with a young brother downtown by the name of Quajio Campbell, we fought this 20 years ago, under complete investigation by the police, by the feds and SLED, Quajio and myself. So, I clearly understand the consequences of advocating for or against land use policies.
Thank you, sir.
Richard Haberham?
I'm Richard Haberham, 2938 Bennett Charles Road. This tomb, you know, everybody, maybe always knew this tomb was here, but we didn't know the importance of this tomb. So, when we find out that, that this tomb was Dr. Rutledge and, you know, his sons and everything, was very important to establish the United States. And now, we want to preserve this. We just want to clear it up, make it nice, and right now, we're working with Clemson and Historical Charleston to do this. So, you know, the community is in support of it, and I think this would be a well-added piece for Charleston County itself, just to let everybody know how, you know, folk got started and who was here. And I got another statement, it's not about the tomb, I didn't sign up for the other part comment, I just want to make a statement about the HBC. You know, I always advocate for the, you know, strong HBC. Lately, I've been hearing a lot of comments about the drawbacks and the bad things of HBC, but a lot of people confusing zoning with the HBC. You know, it's, you know, I, I want a strong HBC, but people have to understand, HBC and zoning, two, two different things. And, look, I read in the newspaper with this guy, maybe that big comment, but it's stopping, stopping him from using his property, but that's zoning, that ain't got nothing to do with the HBC. They're just here to make sure that it's the character of the community. So, you know, I support the HBC and support what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is that it?
Just a comment, sir.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Haberham, to say of the community, sir, is very admirable for you all not to have opposed or even to accept this based upon the history of Mr. Pinkney. I think that's quite admirable, sir. And for those who don't know, you need to read it and find out, of course, he was the youngest signer of the Declaration of Independence, and we realize that that was not always fair to all folk at the time. But again, just from me to you, sir, that's quite admirable, and I really appreciate that, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you. So, now we will go to our regular public comment period.
And we have more than 15 people signed up, so I'll start my timer for 30 minutes. The first person's Anthony Bryant, Thomas Tisdale, Bill Griffin.
Somebody call you out and walk out the room, you know. I live in Berkeley County, and I, I'm not going to be the spokesperson for hate crime speech, not going to be the spokesperson for abuse against women. I'm not going to be none of that for you in here tonight. You carry me the wrong way in this room, some staff carry me, and nobody carries Anthony G. Bryant, I run from nothing. I am from the peninsula. I don't know how to run from nothing. I played, I played defense in high school, not offense, I run it to the tackle, not away from it. Okay, so I don't have an interest in the sheriff and the feds, nothing. Black folk, I don't care how you put it, how you want to be race neutral and play Democratic Party games. You saw a black man got hung by the Democratic Party. Hung. Hung. Why you can't call it what it is? Ain't even the Republicans hung him, was his own people hanging him. We did that in slavery, too. Charles Pinkney owned slaves, Charles Corporal Pinkney owned slaves, John Butler's owned slaves. Ain't no compromising in that. Ain't no compromising in that. With me, we talking about rusty judgment, you talking about wrongful arrests, and wrongful actions of 3,000 somewhat odd black men in this country. imprisoned in 20, in the 21st century, something they didn't do. I'm sick of the politics with race. Tired of, well, what's convenient for you, you black, when it's inconvenient for you, you something else. And the Democratic Party played a major role in putting black folk in jail for 50 years. Your children, your grandchildren can't vote for Biden because they ain't, they ain't registered, they can't vote, they're a felon. I'm sick of it, to watch a black man hung like that, hung by another black woman, was she Sally Hemmings? He's a concubine? What's up with that? He can't run for sheriff of this county because he wasn't a Democrat.
Thomas Tisdale, Bill Griffin, Myra Richardson.
So, I, I live in the Tin Mile community, Gadsenville Road. My parents are former school teachers. We've lived in Gadsenville for close to 50-plus years. We're very concerned about some of the guidelines stipulated in the HPC. You know, part of the culture of where I grew up was that people bought and sold property as their finances would allow, developed the land as their finances would allow. And, you know, and now, that right of property owners, I feel like the HPC has kind of limited and restricted. We had no objection, objections to anybody developing their property or doing anything to their property as they see fit. We even have development right behind us. And, and, you know, I'm asking for you all's consideration of changing the HPC, that if anybody, any family disagrees with being a part of it, that they can just simply opt out and make it less restrictive. Plus, to not have major architectural and zoning requirements. Because in my community, we went through Hurricane Hugo, as people, you know, were able to get back on their feet, they upgraded their properties, built bigger houses as they can afford. And that's part of the, the main culture of the community, and...
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale.
Bill Griffin, Myra Richardson, George Freeman.
I'm William Griffin of New Cut Road in Wadmulla Island. And I stand here again to ask council to eliminate the PD bonus density for MAG-15 zoned lands as was recommended by the Planning Commission. I want to thank Joe Evans and his staff for how thoroughly they prepared for this and also recognize the work that the Planning Commission did when they approved the staff's recommendation and approved it seven to one. I know that the last reading was confusing for many of us in the audience, and I think there was some uncertainty about what was being voted on and what were some of the choices at the time, and so I thank you for the time you're devoting to a reconsideration of this. The recommendation, remove the PD bonus density, was not something that came up at the last minute. It was something that grew out of the due diligence of the Planning Commission staff in 2022 in preparing for this review, and it included public comments from the spring through the fall of 2023. The Planning Commission voted, as you're well aware, two weeks before Christmas in 2023 overwhelmingly to approve the recommendation to remove the PD bonus. And that was all done in light of what came from the data that the Planning Staff collected when they did their diligence in finding out what the community's concerns were. There were some overriding themes, and the first was that citizens were concerned about protecting the country's, the county's quality of life and the preservation of rural lands and natural resources. They were very concerned that there'd be a delineation in protection of a meaningful urban growth boundary and that it contained accelerated development. They were concerned about the protection of rural... concerned about the impact that accelerated development would have on those communities. I had, there are here quite a number of residents of Wadmulla Island and of other of the sea islands, and I would just ask you to raise your hands if you too are concerned about increasing density of development and the acceleration of development. So again, I just thank you, please, for considering again what the Planning Commission recommended to you overwhelmingly, and I think Councilman Boykin, you offered the most succinct and articulate descriptions in February of the reasons that it is incompatible with rural use. Thank you very much.
Myra Richardson, George Freeman, John Murphy.
My name is Myra Richardson. My address is 2755 Earl Johnson Lane, Mount Pleasant. I'm here to talk about the issue with the residents or the settlement communities in the Mount Pleasant area. We are under siege. We need your help to stop what's going on. We have been dealing with the threat of condemnation since 2016 in the Hamlin Beach community on this little private road named Earl Johnson Lane to help a planned development that was set to go in on Hamlin Beach Road. 2021, we fought with this. We thought we had it over and done. We received letters in March that our land is being threatened again. If you're going to fix the problem that's been going on on Earl Johnson Lane with the sewer that's been going on for 30 years, fix the problem for the residents. But if you're planning on fixing it to continue on so you can make a profit, now we're getting on what the textbook definition is, the racial wealth gap, because you're going to pay us little or nothing, while Mount Pleasant Water Works, the developer, and even the house buyers will be making money on our backs. While they're making money, we're stuck paying taxes on their sewer. There's three positions, three options that you can take as our elected officials, since we can't vote for anybody in Mount Pleasant because we're in Charleston County. There's three positions that you can take, three options. You can sit, and two of them are going to have the same result. You can sit and do nothing, and we're going to be run over, destroyed, pushed out. You can help them, and we're going to get into the Mount Pleasant Way by funding them to help push us out, destroy us, or you can help us stop them. King Kong and Godzilla, because there's nothing that we can do without your help to stop them from continuing to come back. This is setting a precedent where they're always coming back. The Four Mile Community dealt with Hungry Neck. Now you're coming back with the Mount Pleasant Way. It's almost as if the African-American settlement communities, we look at it as Mount Pleasant is saying, you are in our way, and we're still coming through. So tell us, what are you going to do as our elected officials to stop us from being pushed out? We are praying about it, and we're praying that God turns this around for us, that it will be a David and Goliath situation, because we need help. What are you going to do as our elected official to stop the settlement communities from being run over and destroyed by big business, by profitable business, when we are still going to suffer and have to take the cost of the infrastructure, and they're going to be making money on our backs? Racial wealth gap, we're trying to establish generational wealth. They're about to put a generational curse on us because our children, grandchildren, everybody is going to suffer. We're trying to get sidewalks in our neighborhoods, but Mount Pleasant Way wants to put basically a lane of road and take over properties. Please vote no to spend a green belt money for a sidewalk or a roadway. Please vote no. If it's green belt money, then keep the land green. It shouldn't be used for pavement. It shouldn't be used to destroy our communities. Thank you.
George Freeman, John Murphy, Kevin Richburg.
Try to keep your comments to two minutes so everybody gets to speak.
Now you say it when I walk up.
Yeah, especially when you walk up, George. I know you. No.
George Freeman, 1450 Bowen Road, President of the Cage Organization. I have a few points to make tonight on the Mount Pleasant Way and the segment that your money's being requested for tonight. The African-Americans make up about 5% of Mount Pleasant population. However, the Mount Pleasant Way goes through almost every African-American community in Mount Pleasant. 30 years ago, the town of Mount Pleasant tried to widen Rifle Range Road to three lanes. They were unable to do that because it was declared discriminatory against the African-American community. So instead, Hungry Neck was built parallel to Rifle Range Road to handle the travel along with bike lanes on Hungry Neck. The Mount Pleasant Way will travel through, in some cases, to African-American community. We have over 1,000 acres of parkland in Mount Pleasant. That's more than enough land to have trails for people to ride through in Mount Pleasant. Green belt money should not be used to pour concrete. The word is green belt. The communities have made it clear to the town of Mount Pleasant that they do not want these 10 to 12-foot wide sidewalks in the community. They have gone to the commission, they went to the meetings at Mount Pleasant Water and stated that, and yet we are sitting here today where they have a request before you to build these 10 to 12-foot sidewalks in the communities. I stated earlier about them trying to widen Rifle Range Road to three lanes years ago. If we put in this 10 to 12-foot wide sidewalk, that's the same as adding another lane to the community. This is, makes no sense to us. Please disapprove 7B. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
John Murphy, Kevin Richburg, Jamie Robinson.
Mr. Chair, council members, thank you. My name is John Murphy. I'm at 6556 South Mount Road on Wadmulla Island. I'm also a member of the Wadmulla Island Land Planning Committee. I will keep my remarks brief. I'm here to speak against the inclusion of the bonus density option for AG-15 zone properties. Will Peck has written letters to the council. Private citizens have written letters to the council. We've spoken about this in previous meetings. I'm just going to urge you to vote no on including the bonus density option in the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Kevin Richburg, Jamie Robinson, Gloria Walken.
I'm Kevin Richburg. I live at 6850 Bears Bluff Road, Wadmulla Island, currently serving on the Wadmulla Island Land Planning Committee, and I'm here to talk for a minute about the comprehensive plan review and bonus densities. During the past year, our group, as well as individual citizens and other groups, have been encouraged to participate in the comprehensive plan review. We are pleased to have that opportunity and have engaged with our Planning Commission and staff and have made recommendations to be reviewed. We believe the concept of bonus densities for these rural zoning districts does not reflect the spirit and intent of the urban growth boundary, or in the case of Wadmulla, the purpose of the AG-15 district. Our Planning Commission discussed and reviewed this issue extensively and voted overwhelmingly to remove this option from the comprehensive plan. We ask that you support the recommendations and remove this option from the comprehensive plan. Thank you very much.
Jamie Robinson, Gloria Walken, Sam Spence.
Good afternoon. I am honored to work for Charleston County. I assist Judge Condon in community outreach for probate court. One of our main goals is to effectively engage the community to forge a relationship of help and service, to share our resources that's been available for many years to all and needed by many who did not even know our services had existed. Judge Condon conducts free public workshops the entire year throughout Charleston County to inform and serve the public. I do wish to explain the mask that's been quite the fodder lately. Our court's outreach program participates in parades as well as local events, expos, conferences, workshops, and we followed in this parade the Star Wars fan club. Chewbacca's the main character of Star Wars, one of them. And so the mask was intended specifically to evoke levity and approach about our court. Many see it as austere, non-appreciable. We want to change that. No purchase that was made was intended for any personal use. Charleston County Probate Court assists our citizens with very serious issues and concerns. We take our jobs and we take your expectations of us extremely seriously. Thank you for the chance to allow me to speak before you this evening.
Gloria Walken, Sam Spence, Louis Jefferson.
That's Gloria Walker, 2155 Rifle Range Road. Please vote no against this Mount Pleasant Way Rifle Range urban green belt project, because I live on Rifle Range Road. I see a lot of people coming in, talking loud, bringing papers, and disrespecting our neighborhood if you do this to us. So I suggest that you not vote for this 10-foot sidewalk in our neighborhood. I thank you.
Sam Spence, Louis Jefferson, Michael German.
I'm Sam Spence from the Preservation Society of Charleston. In your packets tonight, you've got a joint memo from the Preservation Society, the Coastal Conservation League, Historic Charleston Foundation, and the South Carolina Environmental Law Project. It says as much in the memo, but we wish to thank council again, along with staff, for taking the time needed to make sure amendments to the Charleston County Historic Preservation Ordinance ensure protection of historic district communities throughout the county. We're appreciative that planning staff supports several of the amendments suggested in the memo, but on subdivision plat review, which is currently not supported by staff but is supported by our groups and residents, we do believe that Historic Preservation Commission should retain an advisory role at the minimum to ensure protection of unique cultural landscapes. These landscapes are unique and characterized not just by their ongoing stewardship over successive generations, but by their lot sizes, their collective settlement patterns, and their locations. And these communities' proximity to development pressure creates a unique challenge for these communities and for the county, for this council. This potential threat is recognized in the county's 2016 Historic Resources Survey, it's in the five-minute, sorry, one minute, the five-year comp plan update before you tonight, and it's part of why the HPC even exists. It's at the heart of the shared support for the advisory review for subdivision plats. Preservation of cultural landscapes has been an evolving field over the past half-century or so. The National Park Service is actually updating its guidance on traditional cultural places right now. And to its credit, Charleston County's 2018 Preservation Ordinance is an effort to be a leader on that evolution. Subdivisions could threaten cultural resources unique to rural Charleston, and allowing HPC review of subdivision plats is a tool you all can include in tonight's... remain a leader in that evolution. Thanks.
Louis Jefferson, Michael German, Joe Jerrigan.
Good evening. I'm Louis Jefferson. I reside at 1128 McKnight Road in Mount Pleasant. Several years ago, our settlement community made a request for sidewalks. It was ignored until Mount Pleasant felt, I assume, that they had an opportunity to pursue a taking, and this is what we feel. We actually sidewalk, they are coming with a way or trail or whatever, 10 to 12 feet in certain areas. We understand, even if their intentions are good, to allow this to go through the settlement community, there is nothing to prevent a future mayor and council to use such a space for a totally different reason. We were just interested in a sidewalk that our children could cross, catch the school bus, or go to a neighbor's house, or what have you, not a highway, just to get from one location to the other. It's been said already, we're not an HOA. We don't have the rules and regulations and all the other things that go with it. We're simply a settlement community, and our culture, our way of life, all of these things are being undermined as Mount Pleasant develop these HOA communities. And we're asking you all to deny the request, because we feel this is the last real opportunity to stop it and not have to worry about how it's used in the future. Now is a real opportunity to deny the request Mount Pleasant is making for a Mount Pleasant Way. So we're asking you to vote against 7B. Thank you.
Michael German, Joe Jerrigan, Billy Walpole.
Michael German, 1707 Snouden Road. Good evening. I'm here to speak in opposition of the Mount Pleasant Way, as well as sewer and our sidewalks. As stated earlier, it seems that when it comes to the Mount Pleasant Way, we, the county, are letting them have their way. In African-American communities, I heard it earlier, we've asked for sidewalks for 20 years in our community. To no avail, we can't get it, funds are not available, whatever excuses we come up, it seems as if we can never get that. The town of Mount Pleasant has encroached on all of these African-American communities. We've been there before the town got there, but they can come up with an ordinance that says, because we're in close proximity, we're going to take over, and pretty much say how we're going to march forward. I can't vote in the town of Mount Pleasant. I have no voice. My voice is only heard here. You are our representative. You tell us what you're going to do for us in terms of helping us with the situation. Sewer's a big issue. You pass an ordinance, but it seems it's not worth the papers written on, because Mount Pleasant is still telling the county, what you got to do with us. I'm switching gears a little bit, but we're still waiting for answer on that, and hopefully we'll have a positive results here in the next couple of months. But I am totally against this Mount Pleasant Way. We're not invited at the table when all this was going through, and I hope that you vote against this. Thank you.
Joe Jerrigan, Billy Walpole, Mary Howard.
-------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------- Quote, "Some folks who are fighting us have sold their property without any opposition from any of us. Now that we are selling our property, they're giving us all kinds of trouble." Ms. Levy, I want to tell you, we're the same as it relates to these issues and challenges that we face. While I'll also say that we don't have any plans to sell our land at this time, maintaining our property's value is important to us, though. It's also important to me that my neighbors' values are lifted and protected as well, which is why I'm here to offer my support tonight. And one final thing that I'll add is I too support the urban growth boundary line on Johns Island. I too enjoy the rural life that I've lived my entire life and plan to until I'm not able anymore. But I support keeping AG-15 as it was intended when the comp plan was adopted and when so many landowners gave, and I emphasize the word "gave," gave, did not receive any greenbelt funds for, but gave significant value in the form of land density to the cause of keeping the island rural.
Mary Howard, Jim McBride.
My name is Mary Howard. I live on Joe Lane on Johns Island. I wanted to let you know that I'm against the zoning change out on Wadmala Island. Negative, I don't like the bonus density. And the reason is, it's just in my head, what's to keep if somebody were able to do the density when they sold their thing and they can do this density stuff? Then you've got this greenery around this area, supposedly to make more green space. And then that gets sold, and now it gets to have bonus density. So we have another group of a bunch of homes again, and then more green space that happens. So that's my question there. My perception is that the urban growth boundary is just being whittled away and nobody really cares. And that's a shame. Okay? The other thing is, this has nothing to do with that, is the transportation sales tax referendum, is that something going with Charleston County going to try to put on the ballot in November? I agree with what the Post and Courier is suggesting highly, is that the 526 and the other projects for transportation get divided for the voting, so that everybody in the county has an opportunity to have projects that need to be done in their areas completed, or not. That if they both pass, they both pass. If they don't, they don't. But separate them out. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
My name is Jim McBride. I'm Charleston City Councilman for District 3, Johns Island and part of James Island. And I'm the only representative for Johns Island in the city. It's good to be here tonight, and I want to thank council members Jenny Honeycutt and Joe Boykin for being very active members with the city, working with the city, as well as Devery and the county staff on working with the city to come up with solutions for Johns and James Island. I also want to thank the county staff for doing a really great job gathering the public input responses to the transportation sales tax. Round Robins, they did. I want to point out a couple of highlights from those responses. St. Johns High School at Johns Island was the number-one physical attendance for that transportation sales tax round robin with about 100 attendees. The second-most was James Island, and the others had 50 or less. So less than half. Of the online responses, the number-one zip code in all of Charleston County was Johns Island, 29455 zip code, had the overwhelming number of online responses. And of those responses, the two number-one projects that were supported were both Maybank East and Maybank West projects for the transportation sales tax. At 93% both, 93% support for both, at about 420 responses each. So I know traffic is bad everywhere across Charleston County. That's obvious. It's a very popular place to come. But I think, I want to point out that Johns Island has a very unique geography. There's two ways on and off the island. Okay? There's Maybank and there's Main. And that's it. And there's not a lot of parallel roads to support extra population and extra traffic. So that's why those responses were so high across Charleston County, was because the people are feeling --
------ All right.
So I just ask for your support for both east and west Maybank projects. We need it. 526 will help people getting on and off the island, but it doesn't help people getting across the island east to west. We need Maybank east and west projects to help alleviate the traffic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right. That's our public comments. Yes, sir.
It is somewhat exasperating. And of course, I don't want to feel the wrath, or face the wrath of Mr. Moody by asking a public question.
I would like to ask you a question.
Do I have permission to ask him a question, or the chairman?
I'm going to wait and see.
Why is it that the people of Snout are still coming to us year after year about sewer? And I thought this problem was supposed to be resolved. Why are they still coming to us?
It's being worked on. They've got to do the engineering. They've got to get the lines in the ground. And then they've got to agree to give other people sewer. They've agreed to give sewer to individuals who have existing septic tanks in Snout. If they will give up their septic tank, they'll let them hook up to the sewer, which is good, because septic tanks are not good, and they have a poor record in that area. That area is not really good for septic tanks. And so it's a health and safety issue. We've got to try to get the Mount Pleasant Water and Sewer Commission to agree with us that they need to, that there shouldn't be any more septic tanks put in the ground over there, and that all we should have over there is sewer, because it's a health and safety issue.
That I understand, but I think the problem still persists that if you don't tie in to Mount Pleasant, you're not going to get water. Am I hearing that correct?
Well, I'm not sure about water.
Oh, sewer, I should say.
I think you can get water. I think there's a lot of people who have water that don't have sewer. But you've got, we've got to get them to agree to let these other people have sewer. It's ludicrous to put in septic tanks today when we know they could have sewer there.
And I agree with you, sir. And I agree with that, and not much of your shit, man, sir. But I think enough is enough. We are allowing a town to dictate to us about our constituents. It's not that they're our constituents. If we don't protect them, then who?
They control it.
Not to be --
It's their sewer. They control it.
Yes, sir. But that's why we have attorneys, and that's why we have a county ministry to help us fight these things, sir. Because it's 40, 45, 50 years, these people don't have sewer. I mean, this is not a third-world country. And we're going to let a town dictate us what they're going to do, and we don't protect our constituents? I don't understand the nine of us, including me. I don't understand that, sir. I'm just getting exasperated time and time again, Snout, 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 Snout. It's just exasperating, sir.
I'm as exasperated as you are. All I can say is that we're trying to work on it, and trying to get them to sit down with us and try to figure out some way to get them to agree to us, with us.
Well, this is we about to break down the wagon, sir. This is tight, sir.
I understand. Any other questions? All right. Our next Freedom of Information Act. Madam clerk?
Freedom of Information Act notice of meeting was posted, and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Okay. Third reading ordinances, historic preservation-related ZLDR amendments.
Do we have discussions on this?
How about the minutes?
To approve item 3A.
How about the minutes?
The minutes have been removed from the agenda, I heard.
Yes, sir.
All right. Sorry. It's not on mine.
They have been.
Take some of these out.
Hold on. Somebody may have moved something down here.
Yeah, I've made the motion to move to approve item 3A.[1349.33]
Second.
Okay.
Well, no, we don't have to make a motion. It's just their reading.
Yeah.
So there's...
It's just a reading.
I can read the ordinance and then call the roll.
Well, can we discuss it first?
Wanted to make a comment.
Can we be able to discuss it first, or?
He has a question.
After she reads it.
Go ahead and read it.
And ordinance amending the Charleston County zoning and land development regulations ordinance number 1202, as amended at the following document locations: Article 3.1 General, Article 3.6 Special Exceptions, Article 3.7 Site Plan Review, Article 3.10 Zoning Variances, and Article 8.1 General, with the right to amend up to third reading.
Okay, so it's been moved, so we would vote, vote it up or down? Is that?
I think if y'all, if someone wants to make a motion, they could make a motion because you have the right to amend this up to third reading.
Up to third reading.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
So...
Mr. Pryor?
Is this, what we are trying to do is protect the settlement communities, correct? With this 3A. So if we want to put some teeth into this, I'm going to ask that we amend this to put a moratorium in place that wouldn't be no more new subdivisions built in these settlement communities for the next ten years. And now, that's not to stop those applications that's already in process. This is for any new application, but it still would allow the individuals who own land to subdivide their properties. This will only be for new subdivisions. And if we really want to protect these folks, this is a way to protect them because Mount Pleasant has already got a moratorium in place, and so has Allendale. And so these developers are going to be running these unincorporated areas. And so if we want to protect the settlement areas, I ask that we amend the motion to do a ten-year moratorium in any building, new buildings and settlement areas that are protected.
Any buildings? If somebody wanted to build a residence?
No, no, that's just for new developments. You know, these people come over these new developments. It's not going to stop an individual from building a home, subdividing their property to build two homes. This is only for new subdivisions. This is only for new subdivisions. And that puts some teeth into this, what we're trying to do here now. And it gives these people years to, they can go back and make some other changes or do some things, but it gives them time not to have to worry about big development moving in.
Second it and discuss it.
It's been moved and seconded.
Discuss it. I think this is in my district, and I'll ask, we each got a map today. It was about the Pinkney home and the public hearing on that. I asked everybody to look at that, you know, that as Mr. Pryor said, the town of Mount Pleasant has a moratorium, the town of Allendale, and north of that, we have the Francis Marion Forest. Ten Mile community is immediately after, as I've said many times, Dunes West, Park West, and Carolina Park. This is, if you go by there, this is the next frontier to develop. And right after that is Allendale. There's going to be, with the other moratoriums, there's going to be tremendous pressure to develop that area. That's where it's all going to be. And this is a historic opportunity to, they don't have a town council in the unincorporated area. In fact, we are the town council of that area. And we can do for them, we need to listen to them and respect them, as we've said many times. These communities are part and parcel. It makes Charleston County special, unique, and the soul of Charleston County. And we have an opportunity tonight to do what Mr. Pryor suggested. If you look at this map, it's inevitable. The development pressures are going to be there, and that's what led to this day. That's why we were here talking about this and why these changes are proposed. And I think we should take this opportunity to do this.
Ms. Hamm, does this affect the whole county?
It only affects the unincorporated area. We can't legislate what happens in all Charleston and anybody out of the municipality. This is only in the unincorporated area of Charleston County that we protect.
So we're talking about all the unincorporated areas in Charleston County?
Yes, sir.
And I, okay?
Within...
Well, we, no, historic districts now. Historic districts, not, I'm talking about historic district that's protected through the historic preservation.
So I was going to ask a clarifying question to Mr. Pryor, whether or not that's what he meant with regards to his motion was pertaining to only the historic districts, the ones that have already been established.
That's correct.
And that's what I understood when I seconded it.
Okay, Mr. Warman?
So listen, I think, you know, I can support this, particularly if it's limited to the historic districts. I, you know, I'm hesitant to follow what I think is maybe not the best policy that's putting the pressure on here with a less-than-ideal solution, but it might be necessary. I don't know, does the, do the other moratoriums go for ten years? I mean, I don't think...
You can come back and, a future council can change it if they want to.
Mr. Boykin?
Ms. Hamm, I don't know if this is something we can discuss in public or not, but if we can, would you be able to tell us some of the potential pitfalls legally in taking or otherwise that the county might be liable for if we were to institute such a measure?
Yes.
And if there's none, I'd hear that, too.
Right, without having done any due diligence on this, I'm unable to answer that question at this particular time.
Ms. Honeycutt?
I just want to be very clear. I will not support telling the black community, which is those affected by settlement districts, that they cannot divide their property. They cannot sell and subdivide their property. I cannot imagine, to me, that seems unfathomable that we are even having this discussion because we know who this affects. Mr. Tisdale here just spoke.
Right.
His family has property, and he's saying, "Y'all downzoned me from R4 to S3. We didn't have the opportunity to opt out." He's got to come back and ask if he can have what he had three months ago. And we're saying, "No?" And now we're going to say none of these people can subdivide their land for ten years? This is preposterous.
That's not true. This gentleman had an opportunity to opt out, if he missed the deadline, but to opt out, that's a family issue they have. That's not with the county. Now, mature, it's not going to stop them from subdividing their property. If the families want to subdivide their properties, they still have a right to, but they just can't come in and build a new subdivision. So if they want to build, if they want to build homes themselves, yes. But they actually have to protect them from these big developers from coming in and building these new subdivisions. So that's all they're asking for. So, and Mr. Tisdale, I think it's more of a family issue than more of a legal issue because he had the right to opt out. Well, we had this. We said, "Anybody wanted to opt out, all they had to do was sign up."
Well, he did have the right to opt out, but he was unable to do...
Well, but I think legally, too, it's some family issues, too, dealing with the property.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Boykin?
I might have a clarification here that might clean this up a little bit. A subdivision, subdivision. Anytime you subdivide a property, it's a subdivision. So to Ms. Honeycutt's point, that's what you're saying right now. What you may be trying to say is no planned developments that go beyond the by-right zoning that's allowed.
Well, the zoning is S3.
Right, so when we go from R4 to S3, that's a minor adjustment into what we're disallowing. To say that there's 100% moratorium on subdivisions that are by right right now, I think that's a bridge too far.
I'm not saying that. The people that's got R3 right now, they have the right to build. I'm not saying that.
What I'm saying is that if they're R4 or S3, they have by-right zoning based on how big their property is, that's still considered a subdivision, whether it has a name or, you know, whatever.
I don't think so.
I think that there could, Mr. Pryor, I think that what you're attempting to say is that the limitation of developers coming in and creating an actual, what we refer to as a subdivision of homes, not the subdivision of property, and that's where things are getting confused. So maybe if you can make a clarification that you are attempting to limit the influx of developers or planned communities, in other words, as opposed to individual subdivisions, because those words can be used two different ways.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I can read what I wrote, if that's helpful. "Amend the ordinance to establish a ten-year moratorium to disallow any residential plan developments by developers, any new residential plan developments by developers in historic districts, with the understanding that this will not prevent individuals from subdividing their property or building new homes."
That's exact, couldn't say to put more pressure on.
That makes it pretty tough on somebody who wants to divide their property. I mean, it's impossible. These are rights that people have. You know, I mean, I think that personally, I think that the word moratorium is not a good word. I don't like it. It means it's a failure to plan. So we're doing something, we're doing something that is not well-thought-out. If we do, in my opinion, if we do a moratorium, I think we can do better than that. I think that if we've come to this, then we need to go back to the drawing board and figure out something different because this is not, I just don't think that's the right thing. But let's see, Mr. Warman, you were next?
I was, so I don't want to make everyone read this again, and I do want to get into this issue of an advisory role on subdivisions, but I think what I heard was planned developments, which I understand to be distinct from like a subdivision plat application, which would maybe go to the other issue that I still want to get into at some point here. A PD, I don't, if we're talking about a PD, I mean, I think that's sort of a separate, it could involve some subdividing, it could not involve some subdividing. That seems like it's distinct. So I don't, it doesn't seem to me that restricting PDs prohibits families from doing sort of small-scale subdivisions. And I'd also note that, not to complicate this further, but I think there are two levels of subdivision plat applications we have in this county. There's minor and major. I don't think we're touching that, but that's another potential option to look at. Like I said, I think the goal, the basic goal of stopping developers from coming in, splitting up these lots, putting in way more density, is something we've been trying to deal with for a year. We changed from R4 to S3. We've got some other stuff we want to kind, I certainly want to address in the HPO ordinance itself. This is yet another possible way of doing that. I agree with you. I don't like the word moratorium, but I do think they're in a unique situation, particularly east of the Cooper, where two of these three historic districts are, where, you know, I think there is clearly some development pressure. We've had to deal with it, and we've had to address it in a number of ways. So, I mean, if that's what we're talking about, I can support that.
Ms. Boykin?
My concern right now, and I may be a question of staff, all the community feedback we've gotten, was this any part of that? Did the community ask for this? Because I'm concerned if we take this kind of action and it was not addressed by the community, I would be very concerned of going unilaterally down that road without their input on what they want for their communities.
My response to that would be, the overall theme of the community is they feel they're about to be overdeveloped and overwhelmed in ways that they don't want. So I would say that this goes to the heart of that.
Mr. Graskill, what I'm saying is, I haven't heard it from them. You're making an assumption. I agree with what you're saying. But, Mr. Smalls? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Evans?
As I recall from the workshops, there wasn't anything specific that said we want a moratorium. However, the overall theme was that we're being overrun with development. What are we going to do about it?
The thing that's changed now...
Mr. Chairman, order. Not everybody's had a chance to speak yet. I think Robert's rules of order.
That's right.
Everybody to have a chance to speak first before people speak two and three times.
Reverend Middleton and then Mr. Darby.
Like Mr. Warman, I think I'd rather get back to what we originally had here. Ninety-nine percent of us, our net worth is tied to our real estate. S3 took a chunk out of real estate values, and I supported that because that's what the community wanted. This would take a wrecking ball to people's property values, in my opinion. It's just more limitations on property rights. And that, I just, there's got to be a better answer than this, than broad brushing and saying, "You can't do this." I mean, Mr. Tisdale, family issues aside, this is just, this would blow your whole world apart, and it's just not fair. You can't speak. You've spoken already. But that's just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll yield to Mr. Darby because I'm still trying to get caught up. I stepped out and came back and totally lost.
Yeah. Mr. Darby?
The terminology settlement communities is almost synonymous with diminishing communities. And all they're asking for is to be protected by the mere virtue of the applause that we heard, just as we represent a number of people, they too represent. And they're saying, in substantive, not in fact, if the moratorium is going to assist us to save our property, that's what we want. And I think that we're in our rights to do that because with the moratorium at Mount Pleasant, the moratorium in Allendale, this will give them added pressure, pressure and pressure. Now, we talk about black folk value. Black folk culture, we don't sell land and houses as a white folk culture. Once we get a place, we stay there. To make a statistical conjecture, about 5% of African-Americans move when they get more money in terms of housing, in terms of equity. But the vast majority of us stay where we are. So it doesn't matter. Our property's a million dollars. Someone will offer me $2 million. I'm not leaving Liberty Hill. My value has gone up, much to my benefit because of now the taxes. So if we don't protect the communities, then what? They're asking, "We want relief. Our community is being diminished, eviscerated. We are being carved up like some Thanksgiving turkey." And if we don't help them, then who? Now, I think Mr. Pryor said, "I don't know all the intricacies, but the family would not." But the terms are not synonymous in terms of the PDs. We're saying for planned development. And what Ms. Salisbury read is spot on. They want help. I'm tired of giving statistics of the millions and millions of acres of land that Freeman got, particularly after 1923, over 23 million acres of land. We're talking uneducated people, couldn't read, couldn't write. They amassed 23 million acres of land because they're new importers of the land. African-Americans. Today, African-Americans own less fuel than 1.1 million acres of land because of what's going on with the taxes, gentrification. And we're saying now, "You don't want us to have anything?" This is a historic community. Please listen. That's why we're here. They want relief. I think, beautiful idea, sir. I think it's wonderful. But I'm not yet finished, sir. But as in the minority, I would say, please listen. Mr. Chairman, time and time again, come up here. It's almost as if we're not listening to the least of the least. And Ms. Honeycutt once quoted him by saying, "Hey, Darby, I like that. What's best for the best is best for the rest." Just like we preserve the area near Kiwa, but we can't preserve this area for snout. What's best for the best is best for the rest. So I'm going to ask this council, please consider preserving the land. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Who else wants to speak?
Reverend Middleton was down here.
I'm not sure he's ready yet.
I am not ready.
There's a conundrum down there. He's working on it.
I would just say, Mr. Chairman, if I thought I was hurting these people in the settlement community, I would have never made that motion. I was pondering on this thing for two weeks, trying to figure out a way how to help these folks. You know, I woke up in the middle of the night one night at 2 o'clock, and I wrote it down because it was so important to me. So sometimes, you know, the God shows you, or gives you a vision, you know, and it's a, you know, without a vision, the people perish, but without the people, the vision perish. So that works two ways. So I brought to this council, and sometimes we've got to be wise and not overthinking and think ahead instead of thinking about the past. Okay? Those folks on bottom of law came here tonight, they want to protect what they have. Okay? And we're going to give them the protection what they need if we can. But I think these folks are saying, "Hey, we need help," and if they wanted to sell their property, it would have been sold by now. You know, so I think they don't want no added pressure. So I mean, everybody votes your heart, votes your conviction. There's no need to discuss this no more. The motion is on the floor, you know. Everybody, you vote your heart or vote your conviction. But remember, what goes around comes around because it's them today and it's somebody else tomorrow. Okay? So that's my two cents worth. So I'm going to call for the questions.
Well, I mean, Ms. Honeycutt and Mr. Warman.
My call for the questions, sir.
That's a motion that they have to vote on.
Motion's on the floor.
But I call for the questions so we can vote on my motion.
I think you have to vote on the call for the question.
Right.
If there are any objections, yeah, if there are no objections, then we...
Make my clarifying comment.
Go right ahead.
Ma'am.
So first of all, what I was hearing when you were talking about subdivisions was the elimination of subdivisions for ten years. And that doesn't mean I'm going to support this. When the clerk read it back, she did reference planned developments. I could care less who ends up owning the land. What concerns me greatly is that many families' generational wealth is tied to their land. And the only way for them to, if they wanted to liquidate that at the highest value, is to sell that land for its highest use. And so there's a property rights element to this that I want to make sure folks are giving up. And it also is only going to impact the folks who live in the historic districts, which is really one type of community, the settlement communities that Mr. Darby was referencing. I find that disproportionately in effect to a particular group. If that's what the group wants, and they understand that impact and their ability to no longer be able to sell their land for that use, if they want to, maybe some do want to keep it. I keep hearing people that want to sell it that reach out to us, so I don't know. I don't presume to know what, you know, other communities want or don't want. But what I want to be clear about is this is going to significantly impact the value of land in those areas, at least for this ten years. And, you know, I don't know what it would do beyond that, but I have strong reservations about whether it's even legal. So I appreciate the effort you made, Mr. Pryor. I wish I'd had more than the last ten minutes of discussion to think about it if it came up, you know, two weeks ago. So feel free to call me anytime. But thank you.
Mr. Warman, did you have something?
I do, and I don't want to get too into the weeds on this, but a question for what we're voting on on the floor. And then before that, a question for Mr. Evans. Mr. Evans, you know, you and I've had some discussion, and I think I've talked with a number of folks at prior meetings about this, and it was just brought up in public comments, the idea of this advisory role for the HPC. If we were to try and do anything on that, we're currently on the agenda item for the ZLDR amendments. I don't think that we would need to touch that to do anything with the HPC, but I just want to move, I just want to raise that before we move forward on it, since this is third reading.
If that would be the will of council for the HPC to have some sort of advisory role, I think that we may need to put that in the ZLDR possibly, and not just in the historic preservation ordinance.
Okay.
I know, I know. Ms. Hamm?
Just while Mr. Evans is up, I think I would like to defer to him to make sure that you all understand that what zoning is in place, what a minor subdivision is, what a major subdivision is, what a PD is, just to make sure that you're understanding what limitations the clerk's motion, as she's captured it, that Mr. Pryor made, that you understand the parameters of it, because there are certain zoning that is by right, even if a developer purchased the property. I don't think that this motion may limit that actual development if it fits within the zoning that's already established.
And that's kind of why I want to address this other issue, because if we're not actually touching the technical term of subdivisions, that's not affected by the moratorium that's on the table. So that's kind of why I don't, you know, I think there, I don't want to move beyond this without touching that, I think. So I'll defer to y'all on how to address that.
Sure. So from, it sounded like from what the clerk read, planned developments, if a moratorium was voted on and passed, it would be a moratorium for planned developments within the historic districts. A planned development to our department is a very specific thing. It's a rezoning. So it would not, if that language was passed, it would not prevent a property owner or a prospective property owner to come in and subdivide their property to as many lots as they can as long as they met the zoning requirements of S3. Used to be, in Ten Mile, it used to be R4, now it's S3. So that would not, if someone had a sizable property, that motion would not prevent us from processing an application to maximize whatever density would be allowed. If it was, if the motion or the language was more specific to a major subdivision or a minor subdivision, then there would be a distinction that would be clear to us, where a minor subdivision is four lots or less, and a major subdivision is over four lots. Just for clarity, I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
Anything else, Mr. Warman?
I think my question is, if we vote yes on this, have we just lost the ability to add in the advisory role to technical subdivisions with the HPC? I'm getting a no. I sort of got a yes. But I thought we just heard that it's really only for PDs. This doesn't actually affect technically a subdivision, i.e. a minor or major subdivision, under the ZLDR.
Correct.
Just a question. If we pass this, is there a need to even have an advisory function for the HPC if we've just basically blocked off the most egregious of all subdivisions that would impact these communities for ten years?
If the language of a planned development, the only way that that would require a rezoning request, the planning commission and county council would see that request. If the language of a moratorium or for planned development within a historic district was passed, staff would not even allow an applicant to apply for a planned development, you know, in the historic districts. I just want to make sure that council understands there's a distinction between a rezoning and subdividing your property under what the current zoning district allows. And by saying a planned development, you're not preventing a subdivision of a piece of property that has a... piece of property that, uh, that has a zoning, that has a right to subdivide their property if they meet the requirements of the ordinance. For, just for an example, the Rutledge Tomb that you saw tonight, that's a planned development. If you passed that, technically, the way it's read, it sound, you would, we would not allow that Rutledge Tomb to come through because it's a planned development.
If I change that language, or if Mr. Pryor changes his motion to say major subdivisions, that accomplishes what you need.
To our world, that would make sense, we would know how to administer that.
Right, I, I use the word residential planned development, cuz I thought it was accomplishing what Mr. Pryor was using, was trying to do.
That's switching it to a whole different thing.
Okay, Mr. Warman, anything else?
Clerk, re-read whatever the amended language is.
Yes, sir, so if Mr. Pryor wants to change that language to major subdivisions, it would say amend the ordinance to establish a 10-year moratorium to disallow any major subdivisions, any new major subdivisions by developers in historic districts with the understanding that this will not prevent individuals from subdividing their property or building a new home.
All right, anyone else?
Heard about to say one thing.
Okay.
Just, uh, as somebody who's driven through here for 45 years both ways, if we don't do this, we'll lose the historical treasure from Charleston County, and to keep in mind that, that this has been here since the Civil War, and represents the blood, sweat, and tears of many generations of people, and what that means, it's a community that, and I can't, um, improve upon what Mr. Darby said, but make it clear, if we don't do this in 10 years, these communities will no longer exist as a distinct historical community, and we'll lose part of who we are and our historical continuity, and I think it's worth protecting, and again, I ask people to look at the map, you have Alondaw to the north, Mount Pleasant to the south, uh, moratoriums, and, um, you can't, this is the next place where after everything that's been built out, major developments would overrun this if we don't.
Thank you, Mr. Kabrowski. Mr. Boykin?
Real briefly, um, I support all the protections we can put for these communities, but what I'm struggling with up here tonight is unintended consequences and disenfranchising certain members of that community by a one-size-fits-all resolution, and I'm kinda with Ms. Honeycutt, I really don't wanna vote on this tonight, cuz I don't think I know enough, uh, or I'm comfortable enough, um, to, to know what unintended consequences may occur, so I'm probably gonna vote no on it for just that reason, not because I don't support the protections.
Mr. Pryor?
Mr. Chairman, I, I hear my colleague says it's, um, gonna affect these folks' wealth or their income, but I, I tend to beg differently. I mean, if these folks want to stay there and they want to build something for their, uh, their, their, their kids and their grandkids and future generation, I think this helps them. Now, you know, when, when Ms. Honeycutt, you says, well, unintended consequences because the property value's gonna drop, I, I say different, I think it may increase because 10 years from now, you know, somebody's gonna be chopping to get their hands on this property because they gonna need expansion, and so I think to say it's going to hurt these folks, I don't think so, and I think if, like I said again, if I thought it was, I would never make this motion, I'd never support this, but, um, and just looking at these folks, they're in it for, for the lifetime. I mean, as far as I see, in the, uh, historic communities, and that's why they actually be on the registry, because they wanna be there for a lifetime. They don't wanna just sell and then the, the community is gone, and, and nobody know it once used to be called Ten Mile, and the name is gone, somebody come and say Lily of the Valley or something, so I'm looking to protect the folks, you know, if I, you know, if this motion passes, it passes, if it doesn't, it doesn't, but at least I tried. Okay, and if, if future council wants to come back in years to come to change, they got an option to change, you know, a past council can't buy a future council. So, just, I mean, I'd be willing for some, if, if it's gonna change some of y'all minds to do five years, but if it's not, and you're gonna vote no, I just leave the, the ten on, on the floor.
Just another clarifying, uh, point for Mr. Evans, the small subdivision, so for individuals, so even through a moratorium, five years, 10 years, however long that may be, uh, there may still be individuals who are landowners, property owners, that would still wish to sell their land, and they sell it, individuals subdivide it, the value of the land for these 10 years, would you see that as increasing, or the property value going down?
I'm not, I'm not an appraiser, but, um, I mean, time, if, if there is, if there is, if there is a hindrance or a cloud on a property, the value won't be there until that cloud is raised, I would think.
So you think the moratorium is a cloud?
Well, I, I think it's, it makes it clear what you can and can't do on, on the property, right? I, I would, I'm not an appraiser, so I wouldn't know, but as time goes by, it does seem like things get more expensive. Yes.
I mean, I just want to, um, ask Mr. Boykin to look at the other side of the terminology, disenfranchisement, because if you don't have any land, you will be disenfranchised. That's just on the other side of the coin, not to say that it would bad what you said, but for someone not to be, not to have land, but, you know, it, it's, that's why history is so important and why we must read it and look at it, but it's so current now. If you look at, and I've said this several years ago, when the Mount, not, there was Mount Pleasant, went all the, um, this monstrosity over there in terms of the, uh, the waterfront, that was supposed to go to Daniel Island. That's where it was originally, that's why the state, but the white Senator C says, no, we don't want that. So the state of South Carolina said, as it, as in most governments, take it to the black community. And now, I thought if we have a Howard height, Union Height is almost gone. It's not even coming down to Liberty Hill. And again, I say to you, the reason why I-26 is so meandering and curvaceous, because the government went through the African-American communities. If you go 26 going south to Savannah, over the bridge was so wide, that was once a black community. That's where blacks once lived, but government came in and took it, and it is indubitable that it got even fair treatment or money for it. So it's always the African-American, it's always the poor, it's always the disadvantaged whites, it's always those two groups. If any two groups need help, it's the African-American and disadvantaged whites. We are not listening, we hear them, but we're not listening, and these folk are saying, protect our land. That's all they're saying. So I'm going to ask Mr. Boykin, I'll ask Ms. Honeycutt, I'll ask Mr. Moody, please just, even if you vote no, you vote no, but just try to understand where we are coming from, that's all, just try to understand on the other side of the coin, cuz again, this, this, it's just a dis-minishing, uh, situation, and this is not always applicable to whites because black folk, sometimes, on detriment, caused the problem. And I'm gonna give you a good example, I'm gonna be quiet. In 1972, downtown Charleston was 72 African-American, 27% white, and had a majority black council. But the blacks allowed zoning, which forced black folk out. So we can't blame whites for things like that. So here we have, these people now are saying, please help us out. So that's all I'm saying, please just consider what they're trying to say. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Boykin?
Mentor to me, I love listening to you preach, and you're someone I pay very careful attention to your words, they're, they're thoughtful, provocative, poignant. I'm, it wasn't that long ago, I sat and watched you in that same chair rail about African-Americans selling their property, and I listen to everything you say, cuz I do pay attention, and I would make the converse point, and I'm, again, I want to protect them, be clear on that. There would not be development pressure had African-Americans not sold their property, and that's the only way those developers can get in there is when they sell it, and so I hear you, I, 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 I have this torn place down the middle, I wanna help, I wanna protect, but I also don't wanna be the person who takes away the rights at the same time, it's a difficult decision for me, just on that point, I'm with you on let's protect the property, I'm, I'm on everything we can do, I'm just struggling tonight on that, I just, I feel like if I'm, I don't wanna take from one to give the other, and that's the dichotomy, but you're on point, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Boykin, Mr. Warman?
I'm gonna be broken record, I, but I hate to do this, but, Mr. Pryor, would you consider amending your amendment to add in, uh, a provision to also amend the ZLDR to provide for an advisory role for the HPC? If we're doing it as, this is getting really technical, but if we're doing it as major subdivisions, I know that the prior protection that for HPC review would have applied to more than that, and in any event, if something happens, council changes its mind, or 10 years runs out, I, I do think having this extra layer of protection of the advisory role in there would be advisable, would, would be helpful, too, I mean, we've changed from R4 to S3, we've had a number of layers of protection here, so, um, I'd ask if you, and I guess also Mr. Kabrowski, would consider adding that, um, as a separate addition to the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Is that it, Mr. Warman?
That's it for me.
I accept you. You've been quiet?
Pivot, pivot to commenting on part two. That recommendation runs contrary to the recommendation by our planning commission and our legal department.
We've discussed this at length, I'm happy to get into it again.
I'm not asking a question, but that, that's a statement, um, that's, that's a fact, that's a statement. That, I'm not done, that's a fact, okay? Your attorney has told you that's troubling, very troubling, so I'm, I'm not, I, I can't, I agree with Mr. Mr. Boykin about, uh, the protections, I, I would like to have had some more time to think about it, talk about that, but this is an absolute deal killer, I don't go against what the attorney tells me to do, because if you do, you might as well get ready to raise taxes and start getting ready to pay things out, so, um, I'm, I'm gonna follow my attorney's lead on that, thank you.
Chairman, if I can have one comment, I heard the same thing, and I don't remember her saying it would be illegal, she said that it, in her opinion, if I remember right, that she didn't have an opinion that it was illegal to have an advisory thing, her position did not reach that level, and I believe I'm correct, I disagree with Mr. Moody. I don't remember you saying that we couldn't have an advisory role for the HPC on it, am I correct in that?
That's not what I said, but.
Yeah.
You said, but I, let's go to the question, then, and.
I, I do wanna say one thing. This is pretty sudden, um, I don't like going against our attorney's advice, I'm not prone to doing that, I'm not gonna do that. I wanna protect these properties, I wanna protect these people, 10 years is an awful long time, um, I think that we're taking people's property rights away, I, I can't support that, I'm sorry, I wanna support, I wanna support the settlement communities, and this includes all the settlement communities, this, all of them, not, not just, not just out there, not just Ten Mile. So, I mean, we, I think we're gonna have a ton of unintended consequences, they're gonna come back and cost us a bunch of money, and we're gonna get sued, um, like we have been, um, so, I'm, I can't support this, I'm sorry, I can't, I wanna protect them.
Mr. Chairman, sued from who? The people in the community who we trying to protect?
That's, yeah, there's, there's other people in the community that aren't here tonight, that aren't making this decision. I mean, there's 300 people in that community out there at Ten Mile.
And they all wanted, the majority of them wanted S3? The, the majority of them wanted S3, and this gives them a further land.
I think we all, I wanted S3. This is not about S3.
Okay, I, I, I don't disagree with you, but I, I still say, you know, the majority of the people that I've been spoken, speaking to, they want this.
Well, we were, we were nine to, nine to zip for S3.
Yes, sir.
Everybody agreed.
After, after we collaborated.
We couldn't have been happier about that.
But, I mean, in lawsuits, you know, people can sue you cuz they don't like the colored shoes you got on.
They sure can.
That don't mean they gonna win.
They sure can.
Okay, and I think we got a, a bright attorney sitting across over there, and, um, you know, and, you know, whether she, you know, uh, uh, supports whatever five members of council says, then she have to go out and defend it. Okay, I mean, I, but I wish we would get the lawsuit going with, um, the town of Mount Pleasant and the Water Works, because, uh, we had an ordinance that we passed, and it's just sitting there on the shelf, because, you know, we not going after, so if we talking about lawsuits, unless, if five of us feel like we need to move forward, I think we should put that on the agenda, and then, uh, instruct our attorney to move forward with the lawsuit. I mean, that's the only way these people are gonna get serious, cuz we keep negotiating, and every time you negotiate, you come back with something different. So the only way to settle it is let it judge settle it, and then once it's settled, it's settled, yeah, it's gonna cost money on both sides, but if we real serious, um, matter of fact, I'd like for that to be on the next agenda, to discuss that, so if five members of council wanted to record, or they, they, they take action, we can do that. Let's, let's.
Can we call for the vote, sir?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
And so this is a roll call vote on, sorry, this is a roll call vote on the motion to call for the question. Okay.
Just, we, we can vote verbally for that.
Okay.
Okay, sure.
So we're just doing a roll call vote on Mr. Pryor's motion? Okay, um, Mr. Boykin?
Am I voting for the question, or am I voting for the, Mr. Pryor's motion?
For Mr. Pryor's motion.
Nay.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt? Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Nay.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Nay.
Motion passes with five ayes and four nays.
Now you gotta read the amendment, right, Mossberry?
Um, yes, sir, that was the motion to amend the ordinance, so now, I'm, I've read the ordinance, now I'm gonna call the roll on the ordinance. Mr. Boykin?
Nay.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Nay.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Nay.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Nay.
The, um, ordinance passes third reading with five ayes and four nays.
All right, uh, 3B, Historic Preservation Ordinance Amendments?
Mr. Chair, move to adopt red line version prepared by staff.
You gotta read the ordinance, we, this, you know.
Yes, sir.
That was a motion to amend, right?
Right.
With the, with the red line, second.
Moved and seconded.
Can we explain that red line? What is that?
The presentation?
So the presentation that we have prepared tonight, um, covers the public input that has been going on throughout this process. So prior to the public workshops that were held last month regarding the ordinance amendments, 11 public meetings have been held regarding the proposed amendments to the Historic Preservation Ordinance, and those spanned from August of 2023, uh, through the end of February 2024. Additionally, staff met with any citizen that expressed interest in learning more, asking questions, and/or providing feedback about the Historic Preservation Ordinance Amendments. Six meetings with small groups and individuals were held between September of 2023 and February of 2024. At the March 12th council meeting, council voted to defer the proposed amendments to the Historic Preservation Ordinance to allow staff, the community, and special interest groups groups to meet. Staff held three public workshops throughout April, all at the Wando Mount Pleasant Library. Two meetings were held on Thursday, April 11, one in the afternoon and one in the evening. Another workshop was held on Saturday, April 20, starting at 10:00 a.m. These workshops were attended by just under 50 citizens in total. The following slides show a summary of the public comments received both during and after the April workshops. These first two slides specifically show the comments that staff supports and that staff has incorporated into the proposed ordinance amendments. These comments include addressing heirs' property discrepancies throughout the ordinance, defining approvable state, advocating for diverse representation on the commission, addressing temporary interim protections for existing historic districts, and clarifying the process for removing historic district designation, as well as reinstating the definition of historic district. This slide shows the comments that were received that staff does not support incorporating within the proposed ordinance amendments. These items include feedbacks such as the Historic Preservation Commission having no authority over architecture, making the Historic Preservation Commission an appeal body only, and the continuation of the commission reviewing subdivision plat applications. Staff did receive several comments that cannot be addressed in the Historic Preservation Ordinance, and these included items such as drainage, infrastructure, and property tax Additionally, several general statement comments were recorded during the April workshops, and these included ideas such as understanding the difference between the zoning ordinance and the Historic Preservation Ordinance, the belief that families should be able to sell their land to better themselves, and the importance of asking communities what their ultimate goal is when they are considering historic designation. Lastly, throughout the April workshops, many questions were asked and answered. Although these questions covered a wide range of topics, most were seeking to clarify the procedures and processes included in the ordinance. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, answer a question?
Pardon me?
To answer that question.
Sure.
Thank you for all the time you spent, and my question is just, in view of what we just passed, does that affect anything that we just presented? Is that in conflict? Do we have to change anything, or is that neutral as, in terms of what we just passed?
Mr. Kabrowski, our attorney has something to say.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It, it absolutely does. You would need to incorporate the changes that you just passed in 3A in order for it to take effect under 3B.
That's...
I was going to say that before.
Thank you. I'm just trying to clarify that. So, how do we do that?
You just incorporated into the motion, notwithstanding the changes that we made in 3A, or however you want to say it. But staff has already recognized that and brought it to my attention.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Warman?
Yeah, I, I think, I don't, I don't know the extent to which the moratorium issue needs to be incorporated, but certainly this advisory role would, would need to be incorporated in here. That's not on the table, and I, I know, I don't expect us to go through that whole debate again necessarily. I'd be prepared to obviously make that, make an amend, make an amendment with that amendment if the current motion on the table fails.
Mr. Boykin?
Question, sir.
Well, this the question, we're making the motion without incorporating?
My motion is my motion, I'm not adding to it. So, we'll vote on this question, and if it passes or fails, then somebody can make another motion.
Well, this, clarify, so you're making the motion without the changes?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. So, I just wanted to clarify, not objecting to your...
Is there a second?
Actually, maybe I should clarify, and this is an objection to calling the question if, if the answer's the one I don't want to hear. Can you make a follow-up motion like that, or do I need to move to amend, win that motion to amend, and then have it on the table that way?
Providing it passes.
Providing it passes. I mean, it wouldn't make sense for us, frankly, to not do it, but...
I think that's how you have to do it.
That's how I got to do it? Okay. Well, then I would move to amend...
There's already motion on the floor.
It's seconded.
Oh, sorry, yeah, that's why we have to do the, call the question.
There is a motion, it hadn't been seconded.
Yes.
So, we got to vote on his amendment?
He's not yet made the amendment.
No, I talked about Mr. Boykin.
Mr. Boykin's amendment.
I made the motion with the amendment.
Correct.
To start it.
I make a motion because it's an ordinance, so you can vote...
You did make a motion to amend the current ordinance with the red line.
Vote on his amendment.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Not the ordinance, but his amendment.
I think we thought you meant Mr. Warman's amendment.
That was moved and seconded, right?
That's right.
Forgive me, then, I thought you said you were making it without the changes that I missed here.
I'm not incorporating other changes, just the ones I put out there.
The ones that staff just presented.
Yes. It's narrowly tailored and confined.
Without the thing that we previously voted on, Mr. Man.
And you say there's a conflict with what he's proposing?
No, they would have to incorporate those naturally, wouldn't they?
So, the motion that's on the floor, the amendment that Mr. Boykin has proposed, is exactly what staff has just presented in relation to the Historic Preservation Ordinance, not withstanding anything that you've done in 3A or what Mr. Warman has raised.
So, we would have to vote no in order to then make a motion to incorporate what we just voted on?
Yes.
I'm just trying to make it clear, so everybody knows what you're saying.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we vote on 3B Historic Present Or, Presentation, Preservation Ordinance as presented. Call for the vote.
Okay. And this is just a vote on Mr. Boykin's motion to amend the red, to the red lined version. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Middleton?
Nay.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
No.
Mr. Warman?
No.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Motion fails with four ayes and five nays.
Okay, we're back to 3B. Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to amend the ordinance with the red lines, and then with the addition of language requiring subdivision plat applications for properties within 300 feet of historic property or historic district be presented to the commission prior to being presented to the planning commission, where the commission would issue an advisory opinion as to whether the proposed subdivision is consistent with the adopted Charleston County Comprehensive Plan.
And incorporate 3A.
And I guess, to the extent other requirements to incorporate 3A are required, I don't know exactly what those would be, but...
I think that's the limitation. That's, it was the, the advisory role.
All right. So, 3A would be incorporated in it?
What he just said is exactly what we need to see.
Yeah, I don't think the moratorium stuff needs to flip over.
So, this includes the advisory role?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Salisbury, any other questions?
All right. So, this is just a vote on Mr. Warman's motion. Mr. Boykin?
May I second him?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Nay.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Nay.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Nay.
All right. So, Mr. Warman's motion passes with five ayes and four nays. Now, I need to, if that's, if that's all of the motions to amend, I need to call the roll on third reading of this ordinance. Mr. Boykin?
Nay.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt? Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Nay.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Nay.
The ordinance passes third reading as amended with five ayes and four nays.
Do you have to read it?
I read it to begin with.
Okay. So, next one. 3C, Historic Preservation Related Fee Ordinance Amendments, third reading.
An ordinance amending those portions of Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 2, Section 2-137, dealing with fees in the zoning and planning department, with the right to amend up to third reading.
Chairman, can I ask the same question to our attorney as I asked on the other one? Do we need to do anything with this one, or is this, and do any other changes we made, or is this?
This is the fee, the Historic Preservation Fees.
The fee ordinance.
Right, yeah, are you, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
I'm asking, do we have to amend this somehow to incorporate what we just voted on, or is this?
I don't believe so. I think this is just the fee ordinance. I don't think this incorporates any of the things that you've considered.
If I may make it simple.
Okay.
Pardon me, is, is there any conflict, and Chairman, if we were to vote a on, aye on this?
No, sir.
Thank you. I'm just trying to make that clear.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
All right. 3D, Increase 911 Wireline Fee to 60 Cents. Ordinance, third reading.
An ordinance amending those portions of Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 2, Section 2-137, dealing with fees. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. Second reading ordinances, 4A, St. John's Fire District General Obligation Bonds Ordinance, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the St. John's Fire District, South Carolina, to issue not exceeding $24,500,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds, providing for the publication of notice of the said finding and authorization, and providing for other matters related thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Nay.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, number 4B?
Yes, sir.
4B, the comprehensive plan five-year review. We, we approved all the discussion on that, and we were, we did not record, we did not take the vote.
Right.
So, this will be a vote for the second reading of the ordinance. We had a long discussion where we, we talked about a number of different things, and somehow, at the end of that discussion, we did not take the vote. So, we need to make it official and take the vote.
Chairman, what did we vote on, then? We did vote at the end of the meeting?
We voted to merge.
Do we have to retake that vote since it's another meeting?
We didn't take the vote.
We voted...
We didn't take the final vote, I should say.
Yeah, the only thing that has to be voted on is the second reading for the ordinance.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Yes.
Are we allowed to make any motions on that now?
No.
So, this for clarity, so if we vote in favor of this, we're saying that we're, we're voting to keep the densities according to what the, Mr. Boykin's motion was?
Yes, that's the pass. Not the first reading, but we got the right to amend up to third reading.
We do have the right to amend up to third reading.
Sorry, I didn't mean that, but that's what we voting on, right?
And as I understand...
I believe that's my understanding.
How procedurally is what you're saying, or do we have the right to amend it now, before the vote?
No, that, that was already moved, seconded, the motion, the discussion happened, the vote just did not happen. So, the vote has to take place.
And even according to Robert's Rules of Order, even though that was the last meeting, we still have to follow through on that now?
Well, that, Robert's Rules don't typically address the, in, in, you know, the fact that you didn't take a vote. It would address if you had taken a vote and wanted to reconsider it, but that's not on the table tonight.
Do we reconsider the motion?
Not until you take a vote. There's a motion on the table that has to be voted on for, well, not a motion, it's the second reading of the ordinance that has to be voted on.
And just to be clear, can we rebook, reconsider Mr. Boykin's motion that passed last week?
There's nothing to reconsider because there was no vote.
Mr. Boykin, let me clear this for you, Mr. Kabrowski.
Yeah.
Mr. Boykin didn't have a motion, okay? that, in the past first reading, but now it's the second reading, and then it puts us on schedule for third reading, if it passes.
We can make the motion to amend.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warman?
Probably put this in the terms that, to not talk around it. I mean, the issue is certainly these density tables, and I think what Mr. Kabrowski is getting at is there's actually no way to get at the issue of removing them tonight because to do that would require an amendment, and to actually shoot down the amendments tonight would just revert it back to what it currently is, which includes the density tables. So, I think that's sort of the unspoken conundrum that maybe we're talking around right now.
And that motion was already considered at second reading at your last meeting.
So, I mean, you know, and I'll just clarify, you know, I know I voted for it last time. I've spoken with Mr. Kabrowski, and I'm with you, Mr. Kabrowski. I'll support removing that, but I don't think it's doable tonight.
Right. All right. It's been called for the question.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby? This is for the ordinance second reading. Mrs. Honeycutt? Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
The motion passes second reading with seven ayes and two nays.
Committee recommendations with first reading ordinance, City of Charleston, transfer of election authority. Moved and seconded, moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Mr. Moody. Any discussion? Mr. Middleton? I'm sorry, I saw you.
I have a question.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Moody.
I guess my question is, I know, how are we going to account for these monies, Mr. Tooten, or I don't see motion people? How are we going to account for these monies to make sure that this is revenue neutral? Do we send the municipal, and this is for any municipality we run, do we send them a bill after the election? You can answer next time. But, you know, do we just take a, is it a fixed price and we're stuck if we run over that, or do we send them a bill afterwards? I want to make sure this is, you know, neutral to the county. I support taking this over and getting this all under one house, but I want to make sure this doesn't come at an expense to the county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
I need to read the ordinance. An ordinance approving and accepting the complete transfer of authority to conduct municipal elections for the City of Charleston to the Board of Elections and voter registration of Charleston County.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Through C, Mr. Pryor and Reverend Middleton. Any discussion on any of these items? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve 7A through E.
Can we take B off and do B separate?
7A, C, D, E.
So, we're 7A?
A, C, D, E.
D, so we're separating number B. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any discussion on the four that we're voting on right now?
This is a question on 7A for the staff. We, as I understand it, and made to our attorney, what we, this has to do with the Mount Pleasant Way, but what we would vote on is we're voting to give money to, for the right of ways, to buy the right of ways and the appraisals of the right of way. Is that what this is? We're not actually voting on the, this one clarification of what we're voting on.
Councilman Kabrowski, that's correct. Green Belt funds can be used to acquire right-of-way for these corridor projects as well as the associated appraisals and things like that, but not for actual construction of multi-use path.
Right. Right.
I just have one question. I've never been one, never ever one who's been vindictive. I'm sorry, I've never been one who's been vindictive. My mother wouldn't allow that. But, when it comes down to 7A, if Mount Pleasant is going to play hardball, why are we going to vote against them getting these dollars? If they're not doing anything for Snowden, they're not doing anything for us, they're going against our ordinance, why are we going to give them money? That would be my question.
Call for the question.
I'd like to have an answer. I know an answer for questions, sir. And after the answer, we can move on. I just want to answer.
Call for the question.
Rhetorical.
From who?
Honestly, Reverend, I'd really like to know.
Well, I'll take a shot. I'll take a shot. I mean, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I wrestle with these constituents' concerns. I do. And Mr. Pryor and I have talked about this, and I'd like to explore it a little bit more. The other thing I wrestle with, though, is this, these are these municipalities' monies. So, how do we tell them money that's been put in their bucket, they can't spend it? So, I don't have an answer for that yet. I'd like to explore it a little bit more, but that's my shot at your answer.
Okay, thank you. That's all I ask. That's all. Thank you.
I think that's a good answer. Jenny?
I apologize if I didn't hear you, Mr. Davis. This money can also not be used for any condemnation purposes, correct?
That's correct. That's part of the ordinance.
So, if an owner does not want the path widened in front of their house, we simply won't widen it there, correct?
Green Belt funds cannot be used for that purpose, for condemnation, I think is what you were getting at. Green Belt funds cannot be used for that. We do have some staff here from the town of Mount Pleasant tonight, if you would like to have them speak to that.
Ms. Farrell, Kristi Ann Farrell, the deputy administrator for the town is here.
Chairman, while they're coming up.
Based on the...
7B is the one that I think, not 7A, 7B is the one. I think 7A is totally different, right?
They're both part of the way.
So, A, C, D, and E, we're ready to vote on right now. Is that correct?
So, let's take C, D, and E, since the Mount Pleasant project seem to be, you know, of concern, and at least vote on those so that the folk who are associated with those can not be tied up in all this discussion. So, C, D, E. Thank you so much.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. All right. Ms. Farrell?
Good evening.
Do you have questions? Anyone have questions about?
So, I wanted to ask, because based on Mr. Davis, and I don't want things to be a word salad, right? Because he said that, you know, green belt funds cannot be used based on our ordinance for condemnation, and we are aware of that and definitely support that. And so, if then a property owner does not wish, who's in the impacted area, does not wish to sell, give the right of way, green belt funds would not be used for that acquisition. But if condemnation is required, is it then saying that Mount Pleasant would then move to condemn these people's property in some way, still to achieve, you know, the same end?
No, I don't think it says that. And first, just to make sure I properly introduce myself, I'm Kristi Ann Farrell. I'm the assistant administrator for the town of Mount Pleasant. I also have James Aton with me, who's the deputy director for transportation and the project manager for Mount Pleasant Way. But to answer your question regarding eminent domain and condemnation, that has come up a number of times with previous projects as well as this particular one, not on Long Point Road, which is 7A, but in particular with 7B. First of all, to echo what Mr. Davis has already stated, the green belt funds cannot be used for condemnation, and we realize that. But also, I would like to further add that the Mount Pleasant has no intention for using condemnation or eminent domain, even in cases where we would have the ability to do so with our own funds. Instead, just by way of example, we are just now completing the design for Mathis Ferry Road, which is probably one of the most difficult projects that we are going to have to design, just because of the nature of Mathis Ferry Road and the trees. We have worked with all the individual property owners. There are 46, I think, on that stretch. Talked to each one of them, determined whether or not a recreational easement was needed or not. And one, only in one case did we have a property owner who did not want to grant a recreational easement, and in that case, we made adjustments and built every, have designed everything to occur within the existing right-of-way. And so, there will be no condemnation actions. We haven't done any so far at all with Mount Pleasant Way, and we have no intentions of doing so.
I have a question, if you don't mind, and it's not rhetorical, Reverend. But can the town of Mount Pleasant use eminent domain for property that's within the county? I mean, that's in the incorporated areas?
I believe that we would have that authority, but again, we are not intend, we are not using eminent domain with this project.
They cannot.
I'll ask legal afterwards. I don't want to belabor the topic.
Well, Mr. Darby, to answer that question and not to create, they cannot. It's like we can't go into Mount Pleasant and annex property, do eminent domain. You'd have to have our permission to do that.
Thank you for that. I'm not an attorney, so I'm not...
Yeah, because even though if it sits in Charleston County, you have to have permission from that municipality or that person. You know, we can condemn it for you if that's the case, but you can't go in and do it on your own.
Thank you.
Chairman, can I ask?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you. I think somebody who lives east, Cooper, I love the project in terms of connecting Mount Pleasant, but we've heard from people who don't want it on their property. But how does one require right of way without condemnation?
We would build it within the existing right-of-way. So, in the case of Rifle Range Road, which is owned by the South Carolina DOT, we would construct all improvements within the existing right-of-way without any sort of encroachment or easement on private property.
You're saying that all the right-of-ways we're talking about, that you're asking money for, would be money that can be done with no condemnation and can be, is an existing right-of-way that you could build if you want? Is that what you're saying?
We would work with each individual property owner. As the project is designed, we would determine if we perhaps needed one foot or two foot on private property to really accomplish the full Mount Pleasant Way, which is generally anywhere from eight to 10, potentially 12-foot wide path. We would determine if that was necessary. We would meet and talk with the individual property owners, which is what we have been doing with the other segments of Mount Pleasant Way, to determine their willingness to grant a recreational easement. If they are willing, they would be compensated using green belt funds.
And if they're not willing?
If they are not willing, we will make adjustments to the width of the path.
So, you're saying everybody has a right to opt out? So, if a whole community opts out, you'd have to somehow bypass the community then if many people...
We would do, as I explained, for example, on Mathis Ferry Road, the issue there was, really came down to a grand tree, and we needed to, we were trying to work our way around the grand tree onto that individual's property, but she was not willing, and so we made adjustments to the path accordingly and maintained it all entirely within the right-of-way.
Is it possible to do this on Rifle Range Road if many people object that are contiguous to each other?
I think we still can. We've done some preliminary looks at the property along that particular stretch to see what can be accomplished. Obviously, we have not gotten into design yet. That is, this is kind of a first step in the process, and once we hopefully receive the go-ahead with the green belt funds, that is when we would begin the process of design, and then from there, begin to have the individual discussions with all the impacted property owners.
One more point, sir. And since you represent the town of Mount Pleasant, hopefully you may be in a position to answer this question. What is the problem with Snowden and the sewer, in terms of them being forced into the town?
Well, I'm not fully prepared, but I was a little bit surprised by some of the comments because the town did recently change its ordinances to allow for people to hook up to the sewer without having to annex when there's an existing home on the property. So, not for new development, but when there's an existing home that they can tie in and not have to move, and not have to annex. So, I'm not entirely sure what some of the comments were directed towards, but we have, we made that amendment this past year or more to try to accommodate some of the concerns.
Ms. Hamm and Mr. Chair and perhaps the county administrator, but could you all give me a brief in terms of, because I'm not confused, in terms of the Germans are coming back and the answers she just gave, and again, I don't want to belabor the time, but would you be able to, that we can discuss, sir?
We will come back and give you a report.
Okay.
Part of the problem is there's little sections of piping that have to be completed. There's like six or seven sections in Snowden. They have to survey each one. They have to get right-of-ways or easements, if they don't already have them, to do them, and then they got to hire a contractor to put in the sewer pipe and to be able to put a connection in to the house. And so, that's not as easy today as you think it is. There's a lot, it's hard to get a contractor that you can get to do the work, if you can find one, and it's a lot more expensive than it used to be. So, there are a lot of factors that are involved in this thing, and doing this drawing and getting it approved, getting the permits to do it, is not a given either. It's a lot of work to go through those steps to be able to have a functioning sewer line. And so, we will get back with y'all. We will talk to Alan Clum, and we'll get back to y'all and give you a better report on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think, Mr. Darby, I can't speak for you, but the question he's asking, where there's existing sewer lines down and folks are not allowed to tie in unless they're annexed into the town of Mount Pleasant. Now, let's be perfectly clear. The only people that's getting sewer right now are those that have septic tanks. But you still have folks in that area that's right, running right down the road where the pipe is, and not being allowed until they annex in.
It's in their yard.
Yeah, I know. They give an easement for it to come through. So, I think that's maybe, Mr. Darby, what you're asking, why aren't the folks that are ready to tie in now allowed to tie in? Y'all can bring that answer back, but that's the answer I would like to know too, because there exists a sewer right there already.
That's the answer I want to get too.
And these people gave up, you know, the right-of-way, and they gave up and encroachment on their property to have this done, and to be told, no, you got to annex in the town. That's the elephant in the room.
Mr. Warman?
Just to switch gears back a little bit here, I do have one more question on the green belt funds, and Ms. Farrell, I appreciate your explanation. I think that that, I'll just tell you, speaking from my perspective, I'm comfortable with that, with the idea that anyone who's okay with it is happy to, you know, convey those easements, and anyone who's not will be designed around, and, you know, Mount Pleasant can do whatever Mount Pleasant wants to do within right-of-way that it already owns. So, I'm comfortable with that. I guess the one concern I have is, you know, plans can change. It sounds like maybe we don't fully have the designs. If that turned out not to be the case, that it turned out to not be feasible, you know, I would have concerns about this money going to sort of subsidize that type of project. And maybe, Mr. Davis, this is maybe more of a question for you. Would we know before we actually disperse the funds if sort of worst-case scenario, design-wise, that happens? And I don't know who's in the best position to answer that, but...
So, these are our first corridor projects, and the way that we're going to set these up is they will finish their design, do their right-of-way negotiation. Once they meet all green belt requirements, we'll let them know it's okay to close on that, and then they'll request reimbursement. Very good. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. These are going to be sidewalks that everybody can use, and there's plenty of kids everywhere that are riding bikes. If they're not on sidewalks, they're on the street, they're at risk. We know what's happening to people out there that are not on sidewalks these days. So, any question? Any more questions? Thank you so much for coming. Really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We need to vote on 7A and 7B. Is there a motion? Seconded by... 7A and B.
Please separate, please.
7A, move to approve. Second.
Moved and proved, moved and seconded to vote for 7A. All right. Let's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. 7B?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved and seconded for 7B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Two nays. Number eight, audit committee recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I'm new for the staff recommended penalty of $11,341.54, which is entitled Option 3, to be paid by Judge Condon personally and limit probate office to one P card with a limit of $5,000 until further action by this council.
$5,000?
The chairman said, I mean, the administrator said $5,000.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Thousand.
Thousand.
That was $11,341. Is that the number?
Yes, option three.
Option three. $11,341.54, and that number was prepared by the auditors, correct? Okay. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Counsel comments? Reverend Middleton?
Mr. Chair, thank you so much for a wonderful meeting.
It was, wasn't it? Mr. Moody?
I don't see him anymore, but welcome back to you.
I was going to say, you stepped out for 30 minutes.
Everything happened when I was...
Good debate. I'm troubled about this council's lack of faith in our legal and staff when they make recommendations, and I'm also concerned about this continued infringement on people's property rights. Other than that, I'd like to wish my wife a happy birthday. Thank you.
Before they leave, Bob Stewart, and I'm having a block. Ed Carnes, yeah. I know, I should know, are here, and they did a fantastic job. They did a tremendous amount of work to get through this audit and to get it done competently and quickly. And so, we want to thank you for your hard work. You're already doing audits all the time, but this one was like, there's a fumble on the ground, we got to pick it up. So, and you did. You got it done. So, thank you all very much. Dion Brown on the staff as well. Thank you all very much. You did a great job. I think this council really appreciates the work y'all do. Thank you all so very much. All right. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Darby, you're next. Next up?
Thank counsel for the vote for the stabilization and the preservation of the settlement communities, because if we don't, we will. In time to come, all things, even sometimes as the Supreme Court reverses itself. So, if it comes to be detrimental, that's something that we do, but preserve the land. And I'm not, I won't give a sermon, but sometimes, if you don't walk in the culture of someone else, you won't understand that person. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but there comes a time where you must, you strive to, because if you don't experience certain things, you can't say certain things. I have indoctrinated my daughters, don't ever sell this land. I'm indoctrinating my grandchildren, don't you ever sell this land. Too many people suffered for you. In the white community, homeowners, they purchase a house, they get equity five or 10 years, and they sell. They make, that's what people do in white culture. But in black culture, what we do, we buy our homes, and 95% of us stay where we are. So, it doesn't matter whether our property goes up in value or not, because we are going to stay there. And those folks are going to stay. They have been there for the past, since antebellum time. So, they want to stay there, and with the added pressure, their grandchildren want to have a place to stay. So, thank you for the vote. I know it was difficult, and everyone has to vote his or her conscience, because every man, all women and woman, is right in his or her own eyes.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Mr. Kabrowski?
Well, I want to say I'm proud of what we did tonight. We helped preserve a part of Charleston history and paid respect to generations of, that came before, and the blood, sweat, and tears that preserved those areas. I thought we did something important. Had we not done that, this part of our history and all the, what those ancestors and the present people worked to protect, those communities would be gone in a matter of years. And I echo a lot of what Mr. Darby said, but many people in East Cooper area love living, I would say, that preserved the historic communities all over our county, among all the different things. Some of my wife's family have lived there since the 1600s, and they live it on the same land. So, the point is that, and this is much of history, when I made the resolution to honor George Washington and his journey to Charleston, that's part of our history, and this is also part of our history that needs to be loved, revered, and respected. Equally, we took a large measure to show that respect and to listen, and I came in tonight and... And I came in tonight intending to vote against the, the giving the money on the green belt. I like to say I listen to what people speak, and what moved me on that was to say that anybody who doesn't want to be on that, doesn't have to be. So we'll hear if that happens. So I hope that is the case, and with regard to the use of the P cards, I just would like to say, at least we can make a motion, when I heard last week that there are 850 employees who spend a million dollars a month basically on the honor system, I'd like to go back to where, if people want to be reimbursed, they spend it and then seek reimbursement, because that way, they have to provide documentation. And I think most people would be in disbelief that we have 850 employees spending a million dollars a month basically on the honor system. Our people do a great job of checking, but you can't monitor 854 people a million dollars a month. I just think that's a little munch, and I asked for a list of that, and because it's public money, I think everyone who uses a P card, that we should make public what their position is in a way to, that's transparent. People need to know. I'm glad we resolved that issue tonight.
Mr. Werman?
Chairman, I, I would just say, listen, I, I don't consider myself to have a lack of faith in, in anyone here at the county. I, I will not get into the specifics of the legal issues, because I think I maybe have done too much of that already. Suffice it to say, I don't necessarily know if the disagreement is as wide. It's maybe just a, you know, listen, there's, there's public policy considerations, there's a lot of factors there, but I certainly have all the faith in the world in both our legal staff and our planning staff. And I will say to both of them, you know, I was warning a month or two ago about how there was really two huge pots of issues, and there was going to be this whole other issue about how we were changing the standards and these tools, and that was all resolved. So as chaotic as this was tonight, there was a whole other set of debates that got completely resolved with, you know, the various amendments that we added in. So, you know, you don't always get to hear about the icebergs that you avoid, but, but we certainly avoided that one, and I think we were able to, to put together a, an amendment that was strong on all of that as well. So a big thank you to, to staff and to our attorney's office on that front, and for all the advice and counsel y'all have given us on this. So that's all for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pryor?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I echo Mr. Darby's words. Mr. Darby, thank you. You're always so articulate when you speak to these issues, and I was telling Mr. Werman, your, your knowledge of history has always amazed me, and to say that you were hit by a car and almost lost your life, and your memory is still good, that's a blessing. So thank you for your friendship, and thank you for your leadership. Secondly, now that we have protected these folks in the settlement area, we now need to look at flooding, the roadways, sewer and water, everything it takes now to bring these communities up to par. I think we as a council need to look at that, because they're out there to stay. I know we are doing, you know, what we can right now, but we may want to look at doing even a little more to help these folks in these communities, not only them, but everybody in Charleston County. And so that's what we get elected to do, to serve the unincorporated areas. And so as we do on the south side and the north side, I think we need to distribute it fairly and equally, and I'm sure Mr. Tooten does a good job of that, but I'm just asking that, since we have done this now, let's see what we can do a little bit more, because they were complaining about flooding and ditches and roadway issues, and, and so now is the time, we can spend some time doing that. And, you know, I want to thank this council, and those who supported this, and those who did for their various reasons, you know, know that this council still, whether we voted or whether we want or not, act as one, is going to be implemented, and we got more battles to fight. Tonight was a good discussion. We learned a lot, but let's just move on in the spirit of working together to get things done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Well, in the spirit of helping African-American communities, I'm going to keep that, keep that going. I've been working with the Willtown community. The community center down there has a lot of needs, like a lot of other communities. They have a lot of repairs and things that need to get done. I've taken Mr. Rant with me. We've gone down. They've applied for a grant with U.S. Department of Agriculture that will provide them $75,000 towards fixing up the community center, but they need a $25,000 match. We went down there and worked together to help make sure they got all the paperwork and everything, all the requirements met, spoke with the grant coordinator for USDA, who said that they are in a top position to receive this grant if they get the match. And I would like to request that we put this on the finance agenda for next week to discuss and hopefully approve the $25,000 match for these well-deserving folks down in Willtown. Thank you.
You have my support.
Thank you. That is it, Mr. Werman?
That's it, sir. One more thing. I do want to wish my brother Jimmy Campbell, who turned 70, a very happy birthday. He watches us all the time from way down in La Grange, Georgia. So thank you.
Well, my birthday was Sunday. You too.
Happy birthday, sir.
All right, Ms. Honeycutt.
Yes, I've been waiting all night to say this. Congratulations to all of the graduates this week and the coming weeks, college and high school, and if anyone who might have noticed, I've got some sneers at my apparel from certain people, but my son is graduating from Clemson on Thursday morning, and so I wanted to say congratulations to him on President's List.
Nothing else?
Not for me.
Okay. Mr. Administrator?
Nothing, sir.
Oh, boy. Ms. Hamm?
Happy birthday, Reverend Middleton.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. I want to thank everybody. We had another one of our patented spirited debates tonight. We got a lot done, and we'll go forward from there, and we'll, we'll, we'll fight, fight again another day. We'll have another good series of, of discussions in next, at our next council meeting. Want to thank you all for every, the job everybody does. Again, Bob Stewart and his people did a good job. Happy to see Carter back. You know, we got, we're about to roll into the budget, so we got to get some, we got to put our, put our hard hats on and get, get through that. And that's the really toughest time we got, things we got to do. We got to bear down and get this done. So hearing no other comments, I think this meeting should be adjourned. Thank you all very much. Again. That was a... It was not quite... Larry is listening. Boom. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.